I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's town council meeting. It is April 13th, 2015 here in council chambers at 7:00 PM. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Excused.
Counselor Clemens.
Present.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Peliquin.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Counselor Vecchia.
Excused.
Seven here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Agenda item number three. Consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, March 23, 2015.
Second.
Any questions, clarifications? Seeing none, simple hand vote is fine. All those in favor? Okay. Agenda item 3.1 or 3-1. Consider and accept council of the whole meeting minutes of Tuesday, April 7, 2015. Any questions or clarifications? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number four. Subcommittee reports. General Government. Counselor Clemens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There had been two meetings prior to this one for general government. One took place on March 23rd and one took place on April 6th. The March 23rd minutes, I'm not going to read in their entirety. They are available for anyone who wants to see them. Obviously, if you ask in the manager's office, you will have them. This meeting consisted of the topic of reviewing the health insurance changes and voting to submit it to the council to engage in the process of changing the health insurance benefits. And as you all know, we did take a vote on that at the prior meeting, so a lot of what was said in here is redundant in a number of ways. So, there is one, though. Let's see. So, that was the first agenda item. The second agenda item was in reviewing the town's policy for use of town council for the purpose of preventative legal advice to avoid expensive lawsuits, proper defensive claims made against the town, and proper management of the legal budget within the appropriation and submit for ratification. And we did discuss all of the information that Mr. Pecos had given us, and it was unanimous to send to council with a favorable recommendation on that particular item, which is on tonight's agenda. And there was a third agenda item in discussing the Volunteer Holiday Decoration Committee, which we ended up postponing because it was so short on time and we had to get up here for a meeting. So, if you want to see the minutes in their entirety, you certainly can ask for them, as I said. Monday, April 6th, we did have another meeting for general government in attendance for myself, Counselor Manah, Counselor Peliquin, citizens members, Ms. Cristo and Mr. Janes. We also had a number of counselors, Moriarty, Steves, and Vandal, also interim town manager, Mr. Pecos, principal assessor, Mr. Canoyer, residents, Karen Pikarsky, Ken Pickren, Maureen Doyle, and John Pulaski. We called the meeting at 6:00, and the first agenda item was discuss the sale of land currently classified under the provisions of MGL Chapter 61A owned by the Jim H. McKinstry Trust for $775,000 and entertain a motion to submit request for said purchase to council for ratification. With much discussion held on this topic, Mr. Pecos apologizes for the letter being late to the council. Mr. Pecos said he has reviewed the emails he received from town councilors in regards to the letter. He's referring to a letter that was sent to us by an attorney's office in regard to the sale of this land from the McKinstry Trust to Casella. Mr. Pecos said he forwarded this issue to the town departments and received two responses, one from the assessor's office and one from the planning board, and he is waiting for Conservation Commission's report. He said the town has the right of first refusal on this property being discussed. He said that the McKinstry Trust has reached an agreement with Casella Corp regarding the purchase of this property. He mentioned that the town has the right to match this offer and sign a sales agreement and has until June 20th to decide this. He described ways that the town might be able to preserve land. Mr. Pecos said the town can buy the land right of first, buy it right out for first rights of refusal for $775,000, but he recommended against this. Mr. Pecos said the land is adjacent to the industrial park and the sewer lines are already in place there. He suggested that there may be another use in mind for the site by Casella other than expansion of the landfill. He said there is a council of the whole meeting being planned for mid-April, including executive session that will bring additional information regarding this to the council. Again, a lot of what Mr. Pecos is saying here is in regard to a number of questions that are being asked by the audience at that meeting. Principal Assessor and Chair of the Board of Assessors, Will Canoyer, described the history of the land. He described that as part of the existing consent order, this land, there is land adjacent to this parcel that must be permanently remain wetlands. Mr. Pecos said that prior to the land ever being used for a landfill, there will be several steps required. He said any use of this land for additional landfill will automatically trigger a Mass Environmental Protection Agency review. He said any development of landfill is currently under the control of the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission. Counselor Manah said she discussed with State Rep Durant and Senator Fatman to see if the state can help the town buy the land. She doesn't want to see a landfill there. Citizens member Janes asked if changing the footprint of the landfill will have any impact on the airport. Counselor, obviously, to that, there was discussion in terms of FAA and their rules and regulations regarding landfill. Counselor Steve asked how the town can buy the land. Mr. Pecos said it would be prohibitively expensive. Mr. Pecos described the land as still tornado-stricken to this day and in need of cleaning up. He said the town can sell the land to Casella if we were to buy it and then fight against any landfill development later on the permitting side as to whether it becomes a landfill. And he said allowing the sale of the parcel to Casella does not guarantee it can be used as a landfill. Counselor Pelican expressed concern that another site assignment hearing with the Board of Health would be very divisive for the community. Ms. Doyle expressed concern about leachate contaminating nearby developments, including Rosemead Apartments, the potential for leachate contaminating nearby developments, including Rosemead Apartments, and also that of Katy Brook, which is in close proximity. Kenneth Pickren of the Conservation Commission described meeting with Doug and John Casella of Casella Corporations when they first arrived on the scene. He said they had a 30-year plan at the time, which included the potential for hydroponic gardens, windmills, solar panels. Mr. Pickren asked if the town can mandate no further landfill use and instead allow other uses. Mr. Pecos said it will eventually be the Board of Health who can stop Casella from putting trash on that hill. Mr. Pickren asked about the five-year rollback tax money the town will receive from any buyer of the property. Ms. Cristo said expanding the trash portion of this area is not what anyone in the town wants. And Mr. Canoyer, the assessor, in reference to Mr. Pickren's question about the tax rollback, said that the five-year rollback amount would be $35,000 in additional taxes to the town because the land would go from farm use, agricultural use, to a taxable type of property. Mr. Canoyer said that the Board of Assessors would like to conserve town land. This area of town has already been targeted for development. Mr. Canoyer said if there is an offer on the table, that any new owner will immediately become taxable, and this is a good thing. Mr. Canoyer said if Casella can't get permitting for any potential landfill, that they will likely come up with an alternative use. Counselor Pelican straw-pulled every counselor present, and no one wanted expansion of landfill into the land, in this land. Counselor Vandal said if you don't want a landfill there, don't sell them the land. Counselor Vandal said they've never been refused permitting. Further discussion was held. Mr. Pecos said he would do the following. He asked the principal assessor, Mr. Canoyer, to develop a pro forma report on the area in question to determine how much land there can be developed. Asked the Conservation Commission to give a general idea of what's buildable. Discuss the Health Department Director, what the powers are of the Board of Health, and encourage the Conservation Commission to have third-party conversations with any other entity that may want to purchase the property and any grants or other funding to potentially allow the town to buy the property. Mr. Pecos said he'll be scheduling the meeting on or near April 21st to discuss the findings of the above. And that was the end of that discussion. There were no votes taken. There was just a lot of, I think about an hour and a half of discussion on this matter, being as serious as it is. Agenda item number two. Discuss the possibility of forming a revolving account for the Holiday Visions Committee and entertain a motion to submit to council for ratification. This is in conjunction with the previous agenda item that was postponed from the last meeting. A motion was made by Mr. Janes, seconded by Ms. Cristo, to vote the item. I explained and described the use of revolving count as a place to put donations that are being made to this committee for future development of the holiday decorations and such. Mr. Pecos said if you don't create a revolving account, then all the donations are meant, that are meant to support this committee would end up being in the pit of the town's general fund. Vote by show of hands, it was 5-0 in favor of recommending the committee and the revolving fund. Motion to adjourn was made at 7:45. Respectfully submitted, Max Gullickson, recording clerk pro term. And we do not, we currently have a meeting, excuse me, scheduled for Wednesday evening, 7:00 PM or following the DPW budget meeting. So, this will be a budget meeting for general government items, and it will not start any earlier than 7:00, or it could start somewhat later depending on whether DPW finishes up by 7:00. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. B, DPW. Counselor Vandal.
No report, but I do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, 6:00 PM, this Wednesday to 15:00. Thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services. Counselor Peliquin.
Thank you. A meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, April 1st, 2015 in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Carrasco, Counselor Steves, Counselor Vecchia, and citizen members Martina Shea and Kristen O'Clare. Also in attendance were Counselor Clemens, Counselor Manah, Town Manager Pecos, John LaFleche, Dean Iacabucci, Helen Lenty, Michael Landman, Cheryl Stanton, Erin Osborne, Melissa Earls, Mary Beth Scripsack, Bill Latoy, William Bishop, Brent Abrahamson, Erin Quinney, Ray Page, Lauren McLaughlin, Colleen Culligan, and Jill Condon. I called the meeting to order at 6:07 PM. Agenda item number one. Vote to recommend the appointment of Jessica Jimenez of Southbridge to the Jacob Edwards Library Board of Trustees for a two-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2017. No discussion was held. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Vecchia with a favorable recommendation to council to recommend the appointment of Jessica Jimenez of Southbridge to the Jacob Edwards Library Board of Trustees for a two-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2017. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, 5 to 0. Counselor Steves and Kristen O'Clare were not present for vote. Agenda item number two. Review and approve fiscal year 2016 Bay Path budget. Mr. LaFleche and Mr. Iacabucci went through a PowerPoint presentation. They stated that nothing more than the assessment amount was being asked for with this budget. Southbridge's budget assessment is $1,102,393. Mr. Pecos said he received a tour of the Bay Path facility and feels this is an outstanding institution. They went over the assessment figures, and the figures being presented today are lower than the figures discussed at that meeting. Mr. LaFleche spoke about the MACWIC program, which stands for Manufacturing Advancement Center for Workforce Initiative Collaboration. They are offering a class this summer in partnership with Southbridge High School to train machinists. The students who complete this program will earn a Level 1 Machinist Certificate. There are companies in Worcester willing and ready to hire a Level 1 Machinist. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Martina Shea with a favorable recommendation to council to approve fiscal year 2016 Bay Path budget in the amount of Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, 7 to nothing. Agenda item number three. Review and approve Southbridge School Fiscal Year 2016 Budget. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Carrasco Jr. to accept the Southbridge School Fiscal Year 2016 Budget. Ms. Stanton discussed the goals of the Southbridge School System. The 2016 Needs Budget is $26,927,856.9. Their needs are for curriculum instructional programs, addition of technology. At the school level, they need additional staff to implement tiered interventions, training for IAP implementation, special education implementation needed for IAP progress, addition of three educational personnel, and a parent-teacher liaison. Ms. Scripsack discussed the needs at Eastford Road. They have no sped teacher and no special interventionists. She said 40 out of 99 students need special intervention, and she was specifically referring to the preschool there, I believe. Mr. Latoy said that at Charlton Street School, there is a need for a full-time RTI, which stands for Response to Intervention Teacher. Two part-time RTI teachers and two behavior interventionists to be shared with West Street School. Mr. Latoy and Ms. Scripsack spoke about the need for special ed teachers and behaviorists in the early stages of a child's education. If behavioral issues in special education can be addressed early in a child's life, the chances of a successful education is high. Over 20% of our students are special education and about 14% are ESL students. Discussion was held on various line items. Council requested a copy of the detailed school budget, which was emailed out to us later on after the meeting. Counselor Vecchia made a motion to amend the previous motion to read, approve the town manager's budget of $25,537,820 for the Southbridge School Fiscal Year 2016 Budget. Vote by a show of hands, 3 to 4. Motion did not pass. Counselors Vecchia, Moriarty, and Carrasco were for the motion. Counselors Peliquin, Steves, and citizen members Shea and O'Clare were opposed. Ms. Condon said that in order to get our schools out of Level 4, the town has to be willing to give the school district and our kids a lot more than 3% to 4% above the minimum net school requirement. She stated that Carlisle Schools, the top in Massachusetts, give 80% above minimum net school requirement. Counselor Moriarty withdrew his original motion, which was seconded by Counselor Vecchia. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Steves to refer this item to the next EHS Subcommittee meeting. Vote by a show of hands, 7 to nothing. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Martina Shea. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, 7 to nothing. I adjourned the meeting at 9:15 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. I do have another meeting scheduled on the 29th. I believe it's at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development. Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no minutes, but I do have a meeting scheduled for April 28th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property. Counselor Carrasco is not here tonight. However, there were no meeting minutes. There is an upcoming meeting, although I do not have the date on me.
4:22.
4:22, thank you. Which is next Wednesday, I believe.
Yes, at 6:00.
6:00 PM, thank you. F, Town Manager Search Committee. There are no meeting minutes for that at the moment, but that committee will be meeting this upcoming Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM in the George Parent Room. However, that meeting will be an executive session as some of the applications and the names of interested parties, interested candidates come out to that committee. However, as part of the confidentiality process for that, that's why it'll be an executive session as these applicants, many of them are currently employed elsewhere and do so in confidence. Agenda item number five is Chairman's Announcements. I just have two, or two quick ones, three quick ones. Saturday, April 26th, is the annual Lucky Duck Day over at Westville Recreation Area, which is a big event every year with a great number of different activities for the kids. There's the canoe race and all sorts of other activities that go on there, and that's obviously free of charge to attend. Saturday, May 2nd, is going to be the inaugural softball for Southbridge at the Southbridge Middle High School softball field. There will be two games that night. One will be a co-ed softball game between the pioneers baseball and softball alumni. One of those teams will be coached by Mario Marcucci, who coached baseball at the high school for a number of years. And that'll be followed by a game that has been proposed between town officials and employees and school officials and employees. And at these games, there will be, we'll be accepting non-perishable food items that'll be donated to Food Share, who just happened to have their big annual Radio-Thon in which they set yet another record of over $30,000 raised, not to mention the food. And then also cash donations will be accepted for the recently revitalized Southbridge Middle High School Booster Club. Along those same lines, there is, recently, a Southbridge Education Foundation has been formed. This is something that happens in a lot of communities as late that have been doing so. Several area businesses, business people and residents have taken the initial steps to form the Southbridge Education Foundation. Its mission is to seek available local, state, federal, and private grants, donations, and other funds to foster community support, and afford the Southbridge School System the ability to engage in special projects and endeavors outside the scope of the school committee's annual budget. The vision of the Southbridge Education Foundation is to enrich and support education in Southbridge by funding educational, recreational, and community programs that promote creativity, innovation, and enthusiasm in the classroom and beyond. Educational grants may be awarded for teaching materials and other aids that will promote social development, as well as augment the current curriculum and more. Teachers, students, and parents need non-traditional ways to encourage and support methods and ideas outside of the normal budget, and that this foundation will become a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which means all tax, rather, all donations will become tax deductible. They do have meetings, which they'll have regular, but if you have information or you'd like to make a donation, you want to get involved or attend a meeting, you may email them at southbridgefund@gmail.com. That is southbridgefund@gmail.com. And for agenda item number six, Town Manager's Announcements, I'll turn it over to our acting manager for the night, Ms. Karen Harnoy.
Thank you. I have just a couple of announcements. National Grid is sponsoring a Community Assistance Expo, which will be held on Thursday, April 16th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Jacob Edwards Library on 236 Main Street in Southbridge. Couple of the participants, Worcester Community Action Council, Central Mass Housing Alliance, Energy Efficiency, and more. Second item is for curbside collection for yard waste begins Monday, April 20th through May 30th. Place yard waste out on the curb by 7:00 AM on the day of your collection in open topped containers or in paper yard waste bags. These bags are available at your local hardware stores or supermarkets. No plastic bags will be accepted. In addition, you may bring yard waste to the dumpsters located at the Department of Public Works at 185 Gulfwood Road or to the next quarterly hazardous waste collection day that's going to be in June. Again, please, no plastic bags or illegal dumping. For any curbside-related issues or concerns, please contact the Health Department at 508-764-4252 or visit ThinkReduce.com. And the last item I have is the Southbridge Rabies Clinic, which is going to be held on Saturday, May 23rd from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on the Town Common, 1 Mechanic Street in Southbridge. Second Chance Animal Shelter will be providing rabies vaccines for dogs and cats for only $10. Microchipping will also be available for 20, including registration. And dogs must be on a leash and cats must be in carriers. And if your pet is eligible for a three-year vaccine, please bring your prior vaccine paperwork with you. We must retain a copy for your records. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Agenda item number seven, Swearing and Presentation. We actually only have one tonight, and that will be from the Liquor Licensing Board, and we'll have Mr. Dale Farren do that.
Good evening, Counselors. We drew straws to see who would come and talk to you tonight. Guess who lost? I did. On behalf of Mr. Bruce Newland, the chairman, and member Mike Daniels, I'm pleased to be here to give you a briefing of the Southbridge Liquor Licensing Board. Our board is made up of three members and one alternate member. At this time, we are still looking for one alternate, so if anybody would like to step forward and become part of our team, we would appreciate any citizen doing so. And they could do that by contacting the town manager's office. The liquor board is responsible for overseeing more than 35 licenses in this town, 14 all-alcohol pouring, that's on premises, four package store licenses, three wine and malt pouring. Two of those licenses are open at this time. If any businesses are looking for a license for beer and wine, that's pouring on the premises. We have seven wine and malt package store licenses, which is beer and wine to be sold, such as Central Pizza, I believe, or a couple of other establishments. Some of the small variety stores have beer and wine licenses, Big Bunny also. We have five club licenses, which includes the VFW Club, and two inholders licenses, which are bed and breakfast-type licenses for motels, hotels. We also have special licenses, which are known as our one-day license. They're used for special events by associations, partnerships, corporations, anybody that might want to have a special, special thing, such as cops and kids, we used it then. All of those licenses need to be permitted and accepted by all the police chiefs, the Board of Health, and the health inspector to make sure that they're using them in the proper way and in the proper locations for the safety of all the residents. The board is responsible for the oversight of all state, local laws, rules, and regulations. We oversee all new applications for licenses. We also do renewals on every single license, every single year. This is a mound of paperwork and a lot of work during November and December every year, so everybody has their new license by January 1st to move forward with their businesses. I have to give a great mention to our town staff that's very, very reliable, okay? Over the years, they've done a great job, and without their talents and knowledge, the committee would not properly function, I guarantee that. Over the years, while I was on the board, Mrs. Charlene Report, who's retired, she did a great job. She always had the answers when we needed them. Semi-retired Mrs. Cheryl Ryan, who's still working part-time, I guess. She's trying to retire, but it always seems there's something else to give her to do. And now, Mrs. Kim Farren, who's doing an awesome job with us, working with the board daily. No relation, by the way, another Farren family. So, I want to give these ladies the highest honor tonight for all their work, hard done, well-done over the years, and I appreciate that. Also, we get assistance from all the other boards in town, the Board of Health, the Building Inspector, the Police and Fire Chief. Every year, all the premises need to be inspected, number one for cleanliness, number two for fire hazards, okay? Make sure people that are in these establishments can get out if there's a fire, make sure there's no problems. The police chief has been very good about, you know, going over everything and making sure that attendance numbers and the right amount of people that can be in the buildings are there. Also, on our regulations, we as members can go in and find deficiencies and bring those people in for a hearing if we do so, if we do find deficiencies. We also work very closely with the Police Department. Every one of our sergeants on the Police Department have been certified as liquor agents, so if we ever have a problem on a shift, we have somebody who has had some type of classroom activity and are schooling in alcohol-related issues. So, it's great. And Sergeant Ryan Rutgers, who attends all our meeting, works very hard and diligent to make sure that everybody's in compliance. I've given you all a brief handout on the Mass Alcoholic Beverage Commission. Basically, what the state does is they hand, they give us an overview of our rules, regulations, what we need to do as a board, and what everybody else needs to do. Some of the quick tips on this, on this page is the quota system, which we're under. Southbridge has only allowed so many per 5,000 licenses, so it gives you a good detail on that in there. It also gives you, it also talks about the fire certificate, making sure that all places are safe for patrons. It gives you transportation permits, who's allowed to carry alcohol and when they're allowed to carry it, and what exactly the pouring permits are and how they are working. So, that's just a brief overview. Are there any questions?
Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, to Mr. Farren. You talked about renewals, but what constitutes moving forward with a renewal of a license here on the town of Southbridge? Could you just explain that briefly?
Okay, I'm sorry.
What constitutes moving forward in the town of Southbridge for renewing your liquor license for these businesses? What do they have to abide by? Can you just give us a brief overview of that?
Sure, sure. Every year, they have to come in with brand-new paperwork that says that they want to renew their license that they have penned already in place. They have to get a certificate of good standing from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which shows that they have not done anything illegal, have paid all their taxes, have paid up on all of their state, in compliance with the state completely, on all rules and regulations, et cetera. We have to make sure that all of this paperwork is put together, and any existing problems or paperwork that needs to be sent by the town gets put in every single year. This is for single year. This is for each and every license every single year, so it's very time-consuming and very, a lot of paperwork to do.
How about compliance with the town? You're talking about compliance with the state. Is there any compliance with the town, with their taxes and water and sewer bills?
Yes, yes. All of those things have, we do get a list every November, October, showing any liens that are out there, or any, you know, existing taxes on properties, et cetera. If they're not paid up, then they either need to go to the treasurer's office or tax office and make a payment plan and/or get it paid before the renewal can be given to them.
And they have to show proof to you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Hi, thanks. One question I was wondering, you mentioned the quota system, and what, has the liquor board debated the state's local option proposal, and what's your, what's the board's stance on that? But the idea of allowing the towns to dictate how many licenses we actually have, as opposed to being limited by, by the population?
Right.
Because that's been an issue for restaurants and things like that.
Some years, way back when, when they decided how and when they were going to serve licenses in the town of Southbridge, it was decided that they would use the quota system. At that time, there was probably 17,000 to 19,000 people. There were so many licenses for every 5,000 people. It's all here on the quota system, which, you know, I don't have it at the top of my head. We have not really talked about it. I know the state has talked about maybe changing that and not having a quota system at all. The town of Sturbridge does not have a quota system. They can have as many licenses as they want. I know right now, the number of licenses that we have bring in over $25,000 a year in revenue for the town. With special licenses and everything, it could be, it could be even higher than that. But us as a board, because the state has not made a determination whether they want to go that way or not, we have not brought it up at the board meetings, and we've not discussed it at all.
Counselor Clements?
In reference to that explanation, it's my understanding that it's not just Southbridge or that the state decided shouldn't have a quota. It's basically, it was the state of Massachusetts, and there are only two towns, my understanding wasn't it, that it was Sturbridge and there was one other town that was allowed, it was a tourist area situation, and they allowed a couple of towns to have these limitless quotas, so to speak, and Southbridge, of course, complied with the rest of the state. There is a, there is a way, too, also, of petitioning, right, using your legislators and petitioning for the additional licenses, should people be coming and asking and wanting to open more restaurants or whatnot. We have the ability to at least try through that process to get another license or to, depending on who's looking for it. My understanding is if it's, if it's a good proposal and it has a lot of backing to it in terms of the proposed business, that the state has been very generous in granting, generous, but has been lenient in granting more licenses at this point, until they can decide, obviously, whether they should remove quotas in general from all towns. But is that your understanding of things?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Yes. The only thing is, is I believe if the state was to throw out the quota system, because we do have it existing now, we could vote to keep it that way if we really wanted to.
Right, as a, as your own town by law.
But my, my thoughts on that would be to promote as many businesses coming into town. Creates jobs, creates, you know, good for the community. It's good for the community.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is Citizens' Form. So if we have any citizens who would like to come forward to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, just please do so. Just give your name and address, please.
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. I'm here before you to voice my own opinion, and I'm not speaking on behalf of any group or a person. I think it's ironic that the town council has had several conversations of late about health care and health insurance with suggestions about being proactive about one's health before rushing to a doctor or a nurse. Meanwhile, the town is welcoming businesses that are not helpful to our collective health, a 12th gas station and a landfill expansion. I completely support healthy local eating and drinking, both of which depend on clean soil and groundwater. As a gardener, I know that I depend on all those things. Don't all Southbridge and Massachusetts residents deserve clean air, soil, and water as a basic human right? How can citizens be proactive about their health when their state and local governments are just looking for short-term monetary profits at the expense of big-picture, long-term health? I urge the town to think of some way to protect them Kinstry property to prevent landfill expansion into that area, perhaps in conjunction with other groups, I don't know. This section of land, 83 acres, I believe, is a good buffer zone for noise, odor, and other pollutants between the landfill and its human neighbors. The forested land and wetlands can filter pollutants, excess nutrients, chemicals, and sediments from the leachate before they reach the groundwater, soil, and air that we all breathe. The residents of Worcester Street have pollutants coming from Route 169 and from the landfill. They are sandwiched. This parcel, the McKinstry Brook property, oh, the McKinstry property, sorry, allows a breath of fresh air to them. And Katy Brook is a stocked stream that is right across the street. I also urge all citizens to contract our legislators, Mr. Durant and Mr. Fatman, and Governor Baker, to encourage them not to allow the taking of Article 97 land in northern Mass through eminent domain. Article 97 land is conservation land, and that is being taken for a private enterprise, Kinder Morgan. Eminent domain is supposed to be for the public good, not for the quote-unquote "good" of a corporation at the expense of ecological and human health. In it, back to this town, in a town with significant asthma rates and other health issues, our town should not be supporting businesses that exacerbate these issues. To sum up on a local level, please protect the McKinstry property. On a state level, please contact Governor Baker and our legislators and voice your opposition to the taking of Article 97 land for a pipeline. Both deals favor private enterprise over the health of our ecology, of which humans are a part. I will close with a quote from Matthew Zephyr from the Municipal Advocate magazine. Protecting land that safeguards drinking water makes good economic sense and is one thing that voters of all stripes care deeply about. Thanks for your time and attention. I wrote a works cited page instead of stumbling over all the web addresses that I used for research. I emailed it to all the town councilors, I don't know if it went through, and I have a few copies here if anybody wants it, or you can contact me at (508) 764-8042. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other residents who would like to come forward to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda? And if so, again, just name and address, please.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Nice to see y'all again. I've been doing a lot of observing for the last six, seven months. The police department and the town hall have been changing tremendously for the people. The crime rate has been going out, but the police department is doing a tremendous job. You think they're not there, but they are there. I see them day and night. They want to get the big guys. They don't want the little guys. And they're doing it very much right. And I'm very pleased to be in the town. I'm very pleased to be in front of all of you tonight. A year ago, I was very upset, emotional, and afraid. All you people made me what I am today. I am a drug addict, and I'm ready to do it now. I'm not afraid, neither do you or your children. I'm glad we're there and all of us every day and believe in each other. And I do and all of you. And some of you say, oh no, in my head. Yes. Yes, I'm gonna be coming. Even if I go to heaven, I'm gonna be here 'cause you people made me a firm believer. The police department is doing a wonderful job. You think they're not there, but they are. They know more than you, and I know. They seen what? They're watching these doors. They're watching. They're everywhere. They're in a disguise that the devil will not recognize them. They want the big guy. They don't want the little guy. They want the big guy. And I'm pleased with each and every one of you as a citizen and resident of Southbridge. But I don't have to live in fear no more. But I believe in all of you, and I tried a new thing, voluntary rights. I, I wanna help Southbridge out. I helped many kids they turned in their town, and I don't doubt your time. 'Cause I'm very pleased to do cleanup in this town. Let all these residents and we're together. Yet, the town is ruined, and it's ruined tremendously. But remember, you drive with no more drugs. The Southbridge police is there along with the town. But we're not taking it no more. All that went today again, I'm blessed each and every one of you, and I thank you very much. I, I do have a delivery service going. I tried the world license. They want me to get an office. I did, but what? It's voluntary. You know, I, I tried a dollar, three dollars to go to Walmart, and that, that's up in my tab. I'm not looking to be some rich. I'm not looking to be some famous. I'm not looking to become your friend. I want safety. And using my car around, it's a silver, Nissan Sentra, and it's right on it, voluntary and private rights. And anybody's wrong on the right in it, it's law free and all free. If you thought you were dying, I'm giving you a one-way ride. But I'm not afraid no more that you people did it, and I thank all of you as citizens, and I like you people that really apply the police department, 'cause I am amazed over these ones. But I never was a firm believer, and I believe the money. If these are doing, they're not there. Believe me, they're there. They would rat like me or you. They would act like I'm a monetary. They're gonna get you. Amen. Thank you all for listening to me, and if you wanna ride, you're on the ride. Goodnight.
Thank you, Mr. Pissett. Do we have any other speakers tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent Aberhamsen, 26 Franklin Terrace. I am a member of the Southbridge School Committee, speaking on my own behalf. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I would remind you and others that there's a hearing on the school budget tomorrow night at 6:30. It will be televised to those who can't come, but I invite anyone in Southbridge through you, Mr. Chair, who can make it here. There'll be a presentation by the Superintendent of Schools. On that topic, at the last Education and Human Services Subcommittee, there was a great deal of talk about, from the town side, from the school side, what really is needed for the schools, for our children, to succeed in Southbridge Public Schools. And taking that as our guide, the Southbridge School Committee has charged the superintendent with presenting a needs-based budget, based on our demographics, based on state law, based on federal law, based on years of underfunding by the town, based on a number of things, our, you know, position of being a Level Four district. Now, Mr. Chairman, I was not going to come tonight or to mention any more about that, but it has come to my attention that some, perhaps, and I hope you will check this out, Mr. Chairman, some have told from the town side, our superintendent not to present that budget, because it would just be a terrible thing, and the town couldn't stand it. I think that underestimates greatly the ability of our citizens in Southbridge to discern and decide for themselves. I don't think the school superintendent should be muzzled in any way. It doesn't mean that something that's presented is carved in stone, but for crying out loud, certainly, we can present what is determined by our educational experts whom we hire, what is needed to educate our children. We ask for transparency, and transparency is a good thing, but you can't have transparency and then be asked to cover it up. I have a problem with that, and I hope, Mr. Chairman, that you will check that out. One other issue, and then I'll finish. Also, at the last Education and Human Services meeting, I made the point that the Superintendent of Schools had sent a letter to the town council requesting that they support asking the governors, the governor, to rescind this cut that he has for full-day kindergarten. We know that the early childhood education is vital, so she asked that the town just support by sending a letter. I had said that it wouldn't have even been brought up at the last council meeting if it wasn't for a Council of Ercy bringing it up at Town Member Forum, and I was shot down about that, that I looked at the tape, and that's exactly what happened. But the other side of that is that the council did agree to put that on tonight's agenda. I'm sure that can be recalled by Counselor Pellican at the meeting. Well, I don't see it on tonight's agenda, and one has to wonder what kind of message that gives, that we can't do even that basic thing of sending a letter requesting that children be funded for full-day kindergarten.
Mr. Aberhamsen, just briefly, so you've hit, you've hit the five minutes, however...
I'll stop right now.
I will, I will note that, as you noted, at the last council meeting, it was stated that we would do so tonight. At the last EHS meeting, when you, that, you brought that up, I had stated it would be on the agenda tonight, and unfortunately, due to whatever the oversight is, it is not actually on the agenda. I know when I reviewed the proposed agenda and okayed it, I didn't think of it at the time, so I take fault on that, and I would be more than happy, considering the intent had been stated in public here on TV two, three weeks ago, again, in another public meeting, the intent was stated. So I would be more than happy to entertain any motion from the council to do so. Counselor Clements?
Make a motion to send a letter to the governor's office and any other legislators, legislators that we deem necessary to rescind that vote and to make sure that the funding is in the budget for the early program, the early childhood programs that were cut, or that are intended to be cut. It is the governor's first budget, so I'll make that motion, no problem. That's...
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, okay? Discussion?
Yes, thank you. Just, just a point of clarification, that this is just a recommendation. It's not in the full budget. I did speak with Representative Durant and Fatman on that. So the... So there was actually no vote, it's just a recommendation in the budget to cut that funding. And just another clarification, our legislators did get many, many calls in regards to this, not only from Southbridge, but from other areas that they represent as well. So I just wanted to clarify that.
While it's not a binding issue at the moment, it, it still is not a problem for us to advocate on behalf.
Oh, no, no, I, I totally agree with that, but the word "vote" was in there for the, the state. It wa- it was taken up as a vote, and that, that's not accurate. It, it wasn't a vote at all. It was just a recommendation. So nothing, nothing's been voted on.
Any other discussion, questions, comments?
I'll just come at the, I think the reason too that they recommended to wait till this meeting was because Council Vecchetti brought it up at Council's Forum perhaps, so it wasn't necessarily in the full body of the, of the agenda, so, and we have seen, at least in my experience, six years, things do get left off. It's, you know, I don't believe it was in any intention. As a matter of fact, I think everybody was in full support to not cut, make that cut, so, but we need to put it on paper.
Through the chair, I'm sure it was not.
Yeah, it wasn't intentional, yeah. We do, I wish, it's a shame, if people see mistakes, they really should call us out on it sooner. It would be, if, if you've seen the agenda, if you ever see a posting for a meeting, and or you question whether something's on, call somebody. Don't wait till this meeting. I say that to councilors sometimes. Councilors sometimes will, will do that, you know, little jab on the meeting. Bring it up when the, as a matter of fact, that's one of our council rules. Somebody brings something to our attention, we're not supposed to wait till a meeting. We're supposed to bring it to the attention of whoever that is, the town manager, to bring it to a department head. When there's an issue, we're supposed to be in the forefront, making sure it gets addressed, and not waiting two weeks for the next meeting. I mean, so certainly if you, or if you're worried that something isn't gonna get done, remind us, cause we make mistakes, so, thank you.
With all due respect, I did remind the committee twice, and it's still not on, so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your tenacity, that your fortitude on that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Estrada?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marjorie?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yep.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Seven yeses?
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank the chair, and I hope to see you tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other residents who would like to come forward as part of Citizens Forum? If so, I'll just step forward with your name and address. Going once, twice. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Jessica Jimenez of Southbridge to the Jacob Edwards Library Board of Trustees for a two-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2017.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Estrada?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marjorie?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yep.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Seven yeses?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Ten. Vote to transfer $11,200 from Town Council Reserve Account Number 1.132.5781 to Special Appropriation Account, repairs to sprinkler heads in Police Department to complete the needed emergency repair work.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Council?
I'm just curious, I mean, cause I was reading the information and then the, the quote that we have, obviously specialty. When did this, I mean, how come it all of a sudden cropped up? What happened to our sprinklers, or?
What happened is the fire suppression system in the attic failed. By the time we could get a company in to look at it and evaluate it, it, it took several days to figure out why exactly it failed. And apparently, and I'm not an expert on this, but the piping in the attic, the water sits on the bottom of the piping, and it eventually rotted the pipes. Originally, they weren't sure, cause it was during the really cold spell that we had. We weren't sure if the pipes froze, what exactly was going on. They'd said that these particular pipes have a lifespan of about 10 years, and ours are 20 years old right now.
And are the new pipes better? Do they, are they using plastic, or are they using something else?
It's the same pro-state code. It's the same going, it's lifespan for another 10 years.
So we should perhaps put this in our budget in 10 years? Make sure we can pay for it again, yeah? Get that, get that in?
As long as you're here.
Okay, I guess, and there was only this one, how, do we have a detection syst- is, how was it detected?
Absolutely. We, there's an alarm that sounds in dispatch, so, blocks behind the dispatcher, and when the system fails, we were well aware of it.
Okay, I was just curious. And the only company local or close enough to handle this was this one here?
Right, we attempted to get other bids, but unfortunately, we need a state license to do this work, and we only could find one company locally or within close proximity that has a license to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marjorie?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yep.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Seven yeses?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eleven. Vote to transfer $17,000 from Town Council Reserve Account Number 1.132.5781 to Veterans' Benefits Account Number 1.945-5771.0.596 to cover costs for the months of May and June.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Council Steves?
I don't know if, if Mike is here, but does this, does this simply mean that we have more people coming forward seeking veterans' benefits than, than expected?
I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman, I didn't quite get the question.
Oh, I was wondering, is it simply because we have more people coming forward seeking veterans' benefits than we expected, than we budgeted for?
This has been an extraordinarily busy year. At one point this year, I, I was up to 24 claims, which I'm, now I believe I'm down to 16. So some have left the program, some have gone back to full-time employment. But the state budget was increased last July 1st by the state of Massachusetts. So when they increase their budget, it's more money out of our budget, obviously. So the benefits are higher per month, and we're starting to learn a little shy.
Any other questions, Council? Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Council Marjorie?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Estrada?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Seven yeses?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Twelve. Vote to accept the Town of Southbridge policy on use of Town Council with the purpose of preventative legal advice to avoid expensive lawsuits, proper defensive claims made against the Town, and proper management of the legal budget within appropriation. This will be the second reading.
So moved.
And I'll just briefly read through this, the purpose we just read. The authority to count, hire Council, the Town Manager is authorized by the Town Charter to appoint a Town Attorney or Council, and Special Counsel, subject to the confirmation of such appointments by the full Town Council. No other Board, Committee, or Commission may employ Legal Counsel without permission of the Town Manager, except the Town Treasurer solely for the purpose of tax title services, and the CFO Treasurer solely for the purposes of bond Council services. The only exemption, rather, the only exception to this provision of the Charter is the School Committee, who is also authorized to employ Counsel. Access to Counsel. The Charter delegates to the Town Manager the authority to manage the Town Attorney and Special Counsel budget, as well as access to the Town Attorney and Special Counsel services. The, any Board, Committee, Commission, or employee who wishes to access Town Attorney Special Counsel must submit a request to the Town Manager on the Legal Services Request Form attached to this policy. The Town Manager, or in his or her absence, the interim Town Manager, will act to approve or deny that request within five days. The request form will be returned to the Department, and a copy sent to the Chief Financial Officer of the Town, the Town Attorney, and to Special Counsel if those specialty services will be engaged. The authority, authority to assign legal service work to the Town Attorney or Special Counsel is solely the responsibility of the Town Manager. If the request is approved, the Town Attorney Special Counsel is authorized to provide the legal services requested. If the Town Attorney Special Counsel is contacted for any purpose by any party without an approved authorization form, he or she is hereby directed to advise the person contacting them that further discussion is not authorized. If denied or not properly authorized by the attached form, the Town Attorney Special Counsel is hereby advised that any services provided will be in violation of the expressed will of the Town Council, acting by and through its Town Manager, as well as a violation of the provisions of the Town Charter, and will not be paid. And I think this was the same issue as last meeting, but on 2.8, there is a typo as it's, what it should say is Town Council, as in this body, as what it has is Town Council, as in Legal Counsel. So it should state the expressed will of the Town Council, as in this group here. 2.9, the Chief Financial Officer of the Town is hereby directed to ensure that no invoice for legal services will be paid unless a Legal Services Request Form has authorized the Town, authorized the services. In certain emergency situations, legal services may be verbally authorized by the Town Manager, or in his/her absence, by the interim Town Manager, but the, the authorizing party must complete and approve a Legal Services Request Form as outlined above as soon as practicable. Town Council Access to the Town Attorney and Special Counsels. The individual members of the Council recognize that their authority, under statute of the Charter, is exercised through the entire Council when acting as a body in a lawful meeting. As such, Council members agree that they will access the Town Attorney or Special Counsels only pursuant to a vote of the Council. When so authorized by the Council, the Chairman of the Council, the Town Manager, or another member of the Council, when specifically delegated by the Council, will contact the Town Attorney or Special Counsel and request service consistent with the Town Council's vote. Individual members of the Council may contact the Town Attorney or Special Counsel directly, without seeking a vote of the Council, for advice on conflict of interest or personal liability issues involving the Council member personally. In the case of such consultation, the Council member will advise the Town Manager for purposes of billing coordination. Votes of the Council authorizing access to legal services will be promptly reported to the CFO by the Town Manager for billing and payment coordination. Direction to the Town Attorney and Special Counsel. By passage of this policy, the Town Manager is directed to communicate this policy to the Town Attorney and Special Counsel, and to relate to, relate the Town Council, again, this group, and Town Manager's intent for the Town Attorney Special Counsel to abide by its terms. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Estrada?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marjorie?
Yes.
Seven yeses?
Motion carries, and the third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Councilor's Form, and we will start with Councilor Steves.
One thing I like, I wanted to comment on is that there are a couple of us up there that went down to the, to the Literacy Volunteers evening a cou- earlier last week, and I just wanted to praise the, the literacy volunteers for putting that on. And if you have some spare time, that's a very worthy cause to join and get involved. And there's a lot of people out there that, who are trying to find somebody to help them learn English, to get more involved in our community, and there's not enough tutors out there to do it. So if you can do it and you have some spare time, please go contact Holly Christo, she's running the organization down at the library, and try to sign up and become a tutor. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Vandal?
Almost it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Clemens?
Thank you. Hyannis was the other location in which has the unlimited liquor license, just wanted to mention that. I had the opportunity today to be at the Senior Center, or better known as our local community center. Today was their monthly lunch, and it was very well-prepared in town, and I think the group enjoyed themselves immensely. There was thirty-some-odd attendees. I mention that because really, I'm thinking there needs to be more outreach. I'm not sure if everybody out there realizes that our town has a senior association, and that their senior center is part of our greater community center, which is located on Chestnut Street. If you are interested as a senior in participating and getting out of the house once a month for a lunch, perhaps three times a week for the exercise program that is held there, special trip opportunities, they take different trips throughout the year, all different ranges, whether it's a one-day trip, or they do even larger trips all over the place. It's a great opportunity, it's a great resource here in our community. Speaking of resource, it's also a place that you can go and get information for services, perhaps that you may need as a senior. If you're interested in this type of thing, then you certainly should get in touch with the Southbridge Community Center, and they can put you in touch with the right people for the senior side of it. The community center, as I said, is located on Chestnut Street. The Elder Bus is very familiar with the community center, and I encourage you that, again, if you want to do the monthly lunches, but you're worried that you have no way to get there, the Elder Bus takes lots of people there and returns them home afterwards. It's also the site of the yearly Senior Regional Expo, that, it's a health expo and such that goes on. I believe the one coming up is May 7th, it's a Thursday. And again, I, I really express that you should get out there, you know, get out and, and meet new people, and, you know, there's a lot of opportunity, make some new friends, be part of the community. This is a service for you, this is a, you know, the opportunity for you to engage in, in other activities, and, and certainly stay, stay all spry and loose if you go to those exercise classes. They have a great turnout, and again, that's held three, three mornings a week at the community center. And if you have questions, give a call to the community center, as I said, or, or anybody, call any Town Hall area here, the Town Manager's Office, or the clerk, and they can tell you, or lead you in the right direction. I also know that they occasionally will put information on the cable access channels, so keep an eye out for event opportunities listed there. But I encourage our seniors to get out there. We, we talk about youth programs all the time, and all kinds of programs in this community, but there's a lot for you too, so take, take the opportunity to get out there and try something. And that's it for this, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Estrada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only, I want to thank you one more time, Holly Christo, and your volunteer teacher for the last, the last activity, the last Thursday. Keep on helping for all the fight to, to the dream. Thank you. The, the last weekend, the, the resident, the, the Grace Street, Mr. Chairman called me, for some basic gate block and the, the street. It's, it's very hard for, for, I don't, don't leave the car.
For which street?
Grace Street.
Okay.
That's it. Only go bless your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just a couple things tonight. I did have a resident inquire tonight. I don't know if our interim Town Manager, her noise can answer this or not, 80 Hamilton Street, that, that's a vacant building. Did the town acquire that, or was that sold to a private owner, a private citizen? Or, do, do you know, or should I? He, he's worried because it's vacant, and his insurance companies mentioned something to him about vacant buildings and stuff, being like, you know, a trap per se for unwanted activity. So could you look into that, or could you ask, or maybe I could ask Mr. Papos if you don't know? And second, that same citizen was talking to me about noise complaints, that we know it's nice weather. It was, if it didn't hit 70, it was near 70 today. I know in Chickapit, it was over 70, it was very nice out. And that brings out, you know, people want to listen to their music, it makes them happy and stuff. You have your windows unrolled, and very loud. Now, I know this was a big thing for a couple of past councilors. I believe Council Landjevan and Council Nicola at one time had stressed the fact that they would like the noise bylaw enforced. We do have a bylaw under Section 7-503, and our state also has a noise regulation through the Department of Environmental Protection. You know, I believe there's a certain decibel or something that, I don't know if it's a law in this state, but if that could just be looked into, or if somebody could talk with the chief about that in regards to that, that would be greatly appreciated, because, I mean, we all like to listen to music, I like to listen to my music, but you don't need to have it so you can't even hear the person sitting next to you speak, so. And I think that was it. Thank you.
If I may, Councilor Manna, we have brought this up numerous times with the chief, and he has said that he would gladly enforce the bylaws and the noise ordinances, cause they're, they do exist, as you said. However, enforcement is difficult. It is, the citizens need to get a license plate number or do something that helps assist. I mean, obviously, if, if the police are there, hopefully they will stop somebody who's going by with a loud vehicle or such, but according to the chief, that they would enforce it, they just need a little bit of assistance in order to know who that is, because when a car goes by, they're not there, and it doesn't help, so. But they, we've talked about it over the last few years, so I would encourage the citizen to do that. And it's my understanding, I know the Board of Health has been out to 80 Hamilton Street numerous times. It was from one- It was from one person who used to keep it up, then a family member owned it, and then they, so the family member wasn't maintaining it, and the owner was in Florida, and the Florida owner sold it to another owner who said he'd fix it. And last I, my understanding was that it was going to just go into tax because the owners were just going to let it go. But the Board of Health was out there just within the last few weeks, my understanding, so. But a definite answer I don't have on that. I just know that they've been out there to board up and to try to keep vandals out of there and such.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Peliquin?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, just quickly, I wanted to just note and credit the Cable Advisory Committee. They, as you may be able to tell, especially if you have an HDTV, cameras are new. We have new HD cameras here in council chambers. So to my fellow councilors and to the school committee members, you might want to make sure you have a closer shave because it'll be picking up a whole lot better now than it used to. Agenda Item Number 14, discussion of the next meeting date. That'll be Monday, April 27, 2015, 7:00 PM here in council chambers. And lastly, adjournments.
So moved.
Close in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.